So yes, we're ready to start when you are, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ms. Deveraux, could you do roll call for us, please?
Sharon Wallace.
Present.
Ellen Talbo.
Present.
Luke Lindholm.
Present.
Mark Herr.
Present.
Lynn Larson is absent at this time. Philip Coles.
Present.
And Robert Estrada.
Here.
You have Quorum.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here and thank you for our attendees and the audience as well. We'd like to take a look at the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes and were there any changes that need to be made?
One correction, Mr. Chair. In the, let me see, what's the right section here? The vote section for the vice chair vote. It has myself listed as getting two votes, but it should be Mr. Lindholm.
Mr. Lindholm. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make that correction.
And that's the only.
Thank you much. Well, if we make those with those edits included, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All right, so we have motion to move by Mr. Estrada with the second by Mr. Lindholm. If nothing else, meetings are, minutes are approved.
You might want to say all those in favor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Thank you. It's unanimous. All right, agenda updates. Is there any changes to the agendas outlined from earlier?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we're going to remove the new business item that's listed as proposed natural environment and climate change. That will be brought to you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, and do we have anyone signed up for public comment today?
No one in the room and no one online, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public comment period. And let's move into unfinished business. Let's see here. Ms. Newton, welcome back.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and good evening, planning commissioners. It's good to be with you this evening. So this is another review of the multifamily tax exemption for consideration of residential target area expansion. And then we also have a couple of code updates we are recommending to move forward. So as, as mentioned in the meeting on January 15th, the city council had put forward four areas for consideration for residential target area expansion. As you know, the MFT program provides a significant incentive to meet citywide housing goals, particularly in high-density target areas such as the downtown subarea where growth is planned. Zoning was established and a regional growth center already exists. Two code amendments, as I mentioned, are being proposed this evening. So staff had provided the overview on the 15th and there were many questions that evening. And we are attempting to answer those, most of those within this document. And then I also have Mr. Jeffrey Mack with us this evening, our director, to help answer other questions as they come up.
Ms. Newton, can I interrupt for just a second?
Absolutely.
Just want to clarify, we're, we're talking about the residential target area boundary review, not necessarily the MFT program is. So I think the minutes outlined, we spent a lot of time talking about the program.
Yes.
And the focus is on the target area. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the focus is on residential target area boundary review. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I won't then go over in detail the program overview. That is on your, in your packet this evening in terms of how the residential target areas are established. That is done by the city council. And on page two, it talks about the purpose and intent of the residential target areas. So significant, as you know, a significant economic development tool, which is focused on promoting investment in the community, recovery, and creating family wage jobs. We also want to achieve the densities that are more conducive to transit use and to meet specific density target areas within the urban growth area and to encourage housing of all types and to stimulate new construction or rehabilitation of vacant and underutilized buildings for multifamily housing. Those, these are all important points when you're considering the residential target areas. The incentives, as you know, are the eight-year market rate, the 12-year if 20% affordable is included. Then we also offer a 12-year extension if 20% affordable units is included in two of the areas currently. Minimum requirement must be within a target area, 15 units, residential occupancy 50%, and new construction completed within three years of approval, et cetera.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
We have a question for Mr. Estrada.
I'm pointing back to purpose. And that refers to paragraph, to an extent in this norm, I think, creating family wage jobs. The jobs are only there while the construction is going on. Then we're talking about housing that only has many more to be. Can we really say we're, we're creating family wage jobs?
Well, it does, well, as you mentioned, that does have significant family wage job creation during the construction. That is true. And that's correct, but there is, in addition to the staff that are hired to manage the multifamily, there are contractors, there are other suppliers and services that are also associated with operation of the multifamily property. So, but the bulk, as you said, is on the construction portion of the project.
I'm sorry, I know we did this last time as well, but if I could just speak to that one. The, the job creation is only for construction and it has a tax incentive and option. But all of the economic development that comes related to that, parking income and all the retail on the ground floor, if there is retail, and then all the sales tax that continues, all of those come only because of that. That's the economic development, as I understand it, from the, the state's commerce website. And so that, that, to me, the construction component was just one of the five elements where you do see the benefit.
So. It's only multi-use. And as you pointed out last time, also, it depends on the zoning. So unless you have zoning that is used, if you don't have any, I can talk about that.
Well, that's, that's only for the commercial component. That gives you the added incentive and that isn't, that's exempt, that's not exempted from the MFT either. So the commercial still has to pay taxes and, and so on. There's no credit for the commercial portion. So adding that in doesn't really give you any incentive, because you can't, you can't count that. But every, everyone who lives there, so if you have multifamily and you have, you know, zero multifamily there now and move in 180 units, all the sales and all the economic development comes from having 180 new homes is the economic development or the big driver behind that. But there's also taxes, property value, you know, property taxes, all of that comes from. And that is where the lion's share of, you know, city and economic development come from. Yeah, I, and, but again, that's the MFT. We're talking about the change of the area, right?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Okay. We talked a little bit about the minimum requirements and we went over last meeting, the, what affordable means. And there was a question at the meeting on the 15th, why not require a higher level of affordability? And so Lakewood's program has really been focused on economic development. And all of the projects to date have been the eight-year market rate. All the, and the developers have expressed difficulty in reaching 20% affordability for every project. And so therefore, because of this, requiring greater affordability percent would be a greater barrier to the developers creating any affordable units. So hopefully that answers the question of why we landed on the 20% and 80% AMI. Okay. All right, so again, the program eligibility chart is included in your packet on page three. And I just wanted to point out that the MFT projects that were approved, that chart has been updated. We've removed Toto Town Homes. That project was canceled because the owner sold the project and moved out of the state. So that is no longer viable. However, we did just update that and show that the total now approved to date is 608 multifamily units. And then pending, of course, is Alliance Residential, which is 309 units. And then the Spring Brook two, which is 76 units for a total, a grand total of 993 units. I will mention also, we did just recently this week get another application for an eight-year MFT in the downtown area for 48 units.
Mr. Estrada.
So if it's 20%, so that means that 20% of 593 would be?
So, for the, well, no, no. So what we're talking about here is the grand total of all of the units, both approved and also pending for all MFT is 993.
And so we're saying that they have to have 20%?
No. These, these are all market rate unless Alliance decides to apply for a 12-year exemption. Yeah, no problem.
That's, that's for the 12-year program is 20%, right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Lindholm?
Do we have any numbers on how many projects have been turned down or have canceled application late in the process?
I'm only aware of one that was turned down and that was on Lake Grove. I believe it, if memory serves, was 60 units and that project did still move forward, but they, council did not approve the MFT for that.
Thank you.
Yes.
And Mr. Herr?
Ms. Newton, thank you so much for being here. Is there, I know we've kind of, we've talked about this anecdotally, but we haven't seen, and I don't know if we've asked the question, but on this chart, we're looking at Oak Grove Village and Gravelly Town Homes. And actually even the next two after that, Spring Brook and Rainier Terrace. Those two specifically are just getting in '24 to the end of their eight-year exemption. Are we seeing in reality those increase in revenues since their exemption is now gone? Have we realized that expected gain in income from those properties?
And so I haven't looked at the property taxes for those, but we will, let's see. The Oak Grove actually was a 10-year, so they are not.
Yeah, those, those two are a little.
They're not done yet.
Those, the two after that, I think, would be the ones that are kind of right now. As we come into this threshold and we're seeing, we should come into that range where we're starting to get that financial benefit from the exemptions that were previously approved.
Right, the, they're still under the exemption because 2016 was the approval year for council. So then they had the construction period and then we did the final certificate. And that's when the property tax exemption starts, the year after we do the final certificate. Does that make sense?
It certainly does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely.
To follow up on his question, the, the two that were 2006, they would have been expired with their, or they would have rolled by now.
Yeah.
I, I guess we could just look at the, you know, tax assessment online and, and if it shows, because it'll show an exemption on there.
So if you do.
If it shows.
There were some really good resources that, I don't know if it was Ms. Deveraux or Ms. Spear sent out from Department of Commerce that, that had some charts showing what other cities, how much they'd been utilizing this project and how much of that increased revenue they had already started to see churn. So I just wanted to see if there, if we had any evidence of that with our projects that we could kind of side by side.
Yes, and, yes, Commissioner Herr. Yeah, in fact, on the Oak Grove Village, I actually did look at that one. I take that back. And we are seeing significant tax increases, but we can make a note to add that as a data point to present back when we come to planning commission and our city council to see what the taxes really are once the exemption period is over.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions? No? Okay. All right, and then there was a comment by a member of the public and considering, you know, what are the benefits? They didn't see any benefits really to the MFT program. And really, this outlines some of the benefits to the program, which are obviously the housing supply increase, attracting investment and development sooner rather than later. Also, job creation and growth, affordable housing options, significant increase in property taxes after the exemption period, incentive for property owner to contribute to the community and its needs. We want to reiterate the MFT program does not change zoning or the existing code that authorizes the land uses allowed or the design standards. So we're not here, as mentioned, to discuss these elements this evening. The goal of the MFT program is to incentivize property owners and developers to choose Lakewood for their property or their project sooner rather than later, as mentioned, and also to encourage contribution to Lakewood's planned growth targets. So what are the potential negative effects? Of course, gentrification could happen and less design control in areas outside of the subareas could be not received as well. So if not in the subarea, there is no design control. If in the downtown, as an example, there are specific, specific additional requirements for design. And page five, there was a question about, you know, what, what it actually does, what it looks like for revenues. This give, hopefully will give you a little bit better understanding of the typical project. So this one is Rainier Terrace MFT program. The blue line at the bottom represents the revenues that would be coming to all of the taxing jurisdictions or particularly to Lakewood in this case, if there were no project. And the red line is the revenues due to construction in the first couple of years. And then during the exemption period, of course, there's no additional revenues. And then the spike in revenues once the exemption period is over. So we do have 15 taxing districts in Pierce County. And Lakewood equates to 1.3785% of the property taxes. In this example, Lakewood was receiving about $90 a year on the land. And after the exemption, we are anticipating a minimum of 3,500 annually and that will go up over time. Okay, page six, you've already seen this chart for city comparisons showing who's really building the, these projects. And you had asked for maybe some inspirational projects or what's actually happening, you know, what types of projects are occurring in the region? And so I have a couple of examples here. I wanted to point out the Linwood Trent Project, which received a significant award from the PSRC. And there is a link there. Hopefully been able to take a look at that to see what that project was. And that is an MFT project. And on page seven, we put the eligible zones again for your reference and the growth targets as well as the areas that are currently, that currently have a residential target area. And then on page eight, we have the maps represented again. And you'd asked for some larger maps to take a look at the areas in more detail. Those are available up here in front. If you would like to take a look at those in more detail, please feel free to do so.
Yes, ma'am.
Could I just ask, Ms. Newton, can you just clarify the zoning colors on these maps so people understand the difference?
Sure.
Or is this district of the zoning that's being depicted with the colors?
The, the map colors, yes, let me see. Okay. Yes, so the colors on the map, so for example, the central business district, red is all of the central business district. The black outline represents where the residential target area currently is. The pink area is neighborhood commercial two. The darker brown area is multifamily three. The lighter tan area would be multifamily two. Is that right? Multifamily two is, is kind of in between that. And then multifamily one is the, the lighter kind of tan color. And then on the Oak Brook, one, of course, multifamily three is all the brown area. And then the neighborhood commercial is the pink. And then you have additionally some, some multifamily down below, which is multifamily one. Okay, and then the next map.
Mr. Estrada has a question.
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to the central business district, that one there? You have a vacant tax parcel and it's kind of a light brown checkered. Is, are there any, is there any area within the current central business district has vacant land? I mean, I think you said someplace that we had 69% that was either vacant or underutilized, but only 7% was vacant. Is that all 7% in there anywhere?
So Commissioner Estrada, we do, I did note on page 11 of your packet that there's approximately, approximately 69 acres of which, that are underutilized, of which just under seven acres are, are vacant. And so if you look at the larger maps, you can see them, the outlines better. And so each of the vacant and underutilized property categories are represented on the maps.
Can you just give me an example of one? I'm sorry, I just can't see it, for, for example.
Okay, so as an example, on the central business district map, if you look at the Colonial Center area, so you're familiar with the former QFC property. So that area is designated as underutilized because the building value is insignificant as compared to the land value.
Okay, throughout that, throughout our, our area there, anywhere where there's kind of a checkered light is considered either underutilized or, or vacant.
Correct, so vacant is represented in like a lighter tan color. And then the underutilized category one is identified in blue. The example that I put forward on the QFC property. And then underutilized category two, which is in green, identified in green. And that is also represented on the map.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lynn?
Mr. Herr?
Ms. Newton, just a, a point of clarity on underutilized property. That does not mean that there is not an existing enterprise there. This is only referring to, if I'm correct, the value of the improvements versus the value of the land as a ratio. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
And Chair, if I could ask a question?
Go ahead, Ms. Spear.
In Oak Brook, there is no current RTA, correct?
That's correct.
And so what's being proposed is to have one added here?
It is for consideration. Okay. All right, so then moving on to, okay. So we have on page 10, reinserted the chart showing the areas, all four areas, and some basic positives and neutral caution and recommended considerations. So for the CBD in particular, it is a primary density area. It is a regional growth center, the comp plan, a comp plan priority. And we do have more control over the design standards in that, in that subarea. And it's really the only area being proposed this evening that does have control of design standards. There has been some resident concern regarding development along Gravelly Lake Drive. It is a recommendation by the staff due to the density and that is a re, regional center. And because there are the design controls, it, it is something that we feel would be the best use of the, the expansion. Would, would consider.
Oh, sorry, could I interrupt you for a second?
Of course.
Mr. Estrada, you had a question?
Why does the staff not consider potential commercial displacement as being a caution under the CBD along Gravelly Lake or along Silicon Boulevard? Because there are commercial properties there.
Could certainly be a consideration, Mr. Estrada.
I think that should be added because it wouldn't be complete without saying that it is a caution.
Talk to that.
Jeffrey Mack, Director of Planning and Public Works. One of the reasons we wouldn't be as concerned in the CBD regarding commercial displacement is the large amount of commercial that we already have. When you look at the comprehensive plan and what was laid forward as what we're supposed to develop, we're supposed to be intensifying our housing and residential development in that area as well as densification when it comes to the use of the land in regards to commercial. There's a larger business area, there's a larger incentive to drive people to. There's a larger business area, there's a larger incentive to drive people to come in for commercial, for redevelopment. There's a larger development to come in for incentives that exist with residential. When it comes to parking, that you can go ahead for parking reductions related to transit-oriented development, things of that nature. There is a eighty thousand square feet currently of vacant commercial space that exists within Kite Real Estate on its own. So when we look at the fact of what we have for available land, when it comes to commercial, we're, we're not hurting for commercial when you look at the Central Business District, right? When we look at it, there is still room to grow within the Central Business District. So yes, we could potentially offset some of what could be commercial development. But if you look at the Central Business District also, there are some facilities that you see that are currently ripe for redevelopment because they're commercial, it's already been shut down. So it looks at potential for repurposing. The MFTE, when we look at it, is an incentive for economic growth, that is its intent. So we talked a little bit about like, how does it create jobs and what are we looking at? If you look at any jurisdiction and what comes to the base of their sales tax when it comes in, it is construction that drives it. It will be two things in construction, when you look at it, it'll be construction of new homes. So we'll see some of that sales tax that comes back, but also the sales of the material that come with it. So the development and the creation of jobs exists because multifamily homes is two-year, is typically at least a two-year build-out when it comes to it. So when we look at it, it is not a flash in the pan when it comes to providing a job intermediate where it is. Also, for creating future jobs, it creates on-hand job skills training that people can take and then move to another and actually utilize that. So these are some of the reasons when we look at it for the CBD, why staff recommends, and we look at that. Also, one of the concerns that came up when I asked, and I apologize, I wasn't here for the last planning commission, was that we were looking at what is the potential design impacts and what we have. And the planning commission is not alone in that, and the concerns when we look at it. The council will express concern too before about what are the designs and where are we at? So the controls surrounding that, that we have a force that are an option, are to put it in a subarea plan. Subarea plans have design rules and specifications and allowances, as well as incentives to pull people in again to go ahead and increase what we have going on for that economic development. Anywhere outside of that, it's almost kind of like akin to spot zoning and what you're going to put in. There is no control whether they're putting a garden style. If the garden style doesn't match with the rest of the neighborhood, if there's not design review that occurs, as a reviewing official, I'm going to look at it, does it meet the building code? Does it meet the setbacks? It will be approved. So if there's a design to have control of what we look and how development goes on within the city of Lakewood, you look to the subareas to build those out as they were laid out. Since incentive is what we're after, I recommend suggesting that we incentivize in the area where the comprehensive plan says to build, even with the small offset that will occur with commercial, and use everything that was given to us as the plethora of incentives to build inside the subareas.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, Mr. Lindholm, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mack, that's incredibly helpful. One of the things I wonder is, I think it's important to have all options on the table. So it's, one of the options available to us is to impose a citywide design review of whatever kind we so chose, right? That is available to us if we wanted to.
So the thing that I'll say about that, if you look at the current legislatures we're moving through, design review boards and all of the bills, at least twenty that I've reviewed so far, are not pushing towards design review. What they're looking at is an affordable housing concern and where you're at, and not putting barriers into development. But go ahead and incentivizing and finding ways to promote growth in what we're looking at. So design reviews that do exist in other jurisdictions, I've attended and seen some of those or watched through them. I saw one that took two years to get a wall through because of the design that was on the wall. Because it's not clear, design review, and typically when you go through, it can be very specific like our subarea plan is, or it can go ahead and be a committee. And it comes down to a lot of subjectivity what people look at. There's also the legislative action of standing that up, the time that's taken to go ahead and move that forward. It's not a fast process to even initiate that or recruit for that. And it really does typically end up being a barrier to development.
If I may, no, I think that's very, very true. I think I'm a little cautious to just say that this is what the state's concern or agenda is. And so therefore, that's what we should do in Lakewood. I'm also cautious to say, this is what's happened in other jurisdictions, so therefore, that's what would happen here. When I speak to builders, you're right, they're careful to say that that is a, an obstacle to building something that's affordable and all the things. It's also the case, so Lakewood's a very friendly place to build. We're very tax-friendly, we have other incentives going for us. So, and one of the concerns we've heard from residents is we want to make sure that we're building nice things, things that we're proud of, things that make the community better. So I just want to make clear that that is an option available to us if we were to do it right.
Anything that the council chooses to move forward with that, it is a legal option that they could look at. But it's not something that's been looked at because of the impediments that it has, but it is an option.
Thank you.
I think to your point about, so the subarea, using the subarea is our best tool, or we should be using the subarea as a tool. But the CBD is a subarea in and of itself, right? And so that's, and so we do have a downtown subarea plan that covers that boundary. But the subarea of the, the CBD, I mean, the Lakewood Town Center itself is a very different area of the CBD than, say, the QFC parcel. It's just age different, stylistically different, collector traffic different, transit serving different. And so at what point can or does staff want to consider, I mean, to consider like breaking up, coming up with almost like many subareas? I mean, you could come up with a master plan for the QFC area alone, where you could just break that whole area, that whole area into several blocks where, so that you have a designated, you have designated spaces for the development that you want to drive. But what I'm hearing is that, well, we have a, we have a CBD and, and it's in a subarea plan, so therefore, we have the tool that we need. But I guess, I think I'm kind of getting at is like, if that's the approach, then perhaps this, looking at it that way is too big of a subarea to concentrate any, you know, any focused effort. That's my, that's my, that's, that's my concern and where I come from when I am constantly prying at design standards because I'm trying to get at, you know, can we get to a point of, of, of coming up with a physical vision for a designated area of the Central Business District that has a character and a, a design character and a economic goal about it?
I, I a hundred percent agree with what you're speaking to. I think the, like, this would sound a little silly, but part of my comeback when we look at it is, that is a larger project than what we're currently actively looking at. So I, I love to have the conversation and the understanding of exactly what we're talking about or we're looking at when it comes to different ways that we're going to go ahead and divide the apple. But the one thing, and one of the things I wanted to speak to is, one of the items before us today is, it's really the expansion of the boundary. Where do we look to where we want to move that? So if I ever feel like, it feels like I'm narrowing back in or focusing on that, I am because that is really what is before the commission tonight, is where do we look to expand that boundary? More than happy to have other conversations about it because I agree, it is a very large area. I think it's about three hundred and sixteen acres when you look at it. That's a large parcel to go ahead and divide and try and bring all of it up at one time, or design all of it at one time. We do have other things that we'll be looking for as we move forward. As we know, we got the Raze Grant, so we will be going ahead as well as looking at forward planning for what we do when it comes to multimodal and the transportation and some of the revitalization and what we do across the subarea. And that may be one of the things that comes forward, or, you know, when we come in, we speak. It's like, yes, maybe we need to look at smaller chunks as to how we do and how we bring this forward. So I'm not, I'm not trying to deflect or say, no, that's not relevant because I do believe it is relevant. But I do want to just say, what we're looking at today is about where do we expand? And I'm looking for protections also for the surrounding citizens as well. So one of the things when we speak to the CBD also is that there's the requirement for the transition zone. So we know we've had people in before upset about the MFTE and the proximity because some people feel that it has affordable housing as its drive, really it's incentive. Those homes, when they come in, when you look at them, if you do twenty percent affordability, that's twenty percent of a development. That's not the entirety of the development, that's not an affordable housing or low-income development, that's not what that is. It's an incentive to builders to come and construct housing, right? And incentivize the economy within the district. So I want to be careful about that also, speaking to that. So when people do have that, we have separations and rules that exist, right? Between having a ninety-foot and then the step-down that has to exist in the transition zone. So those are other important things. But yeah, so again, not, not trying to deflect on anything, a hundred percent understand where we're at, but want to stay focused on where we're at tonight because what we're looking for really is a recommendation in the end from the planning commission to take forward to the council. For, and we're looking to give you all the reasons why behind staff is looking at it. And we don't always agree, I've been before the planning commission many times, and we're, we're different areas as to where we're at, like, this is my recommendation, this is what staff recommends. And in the end, there's the council. So just want to be open and honest where we're at. If there's any questions, happy to answer them, but yeah.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mack. And, and I, I think be helpful to just continue and get through the rest of this so we can hear the whole thing. And I, I, I think all the comments have been good so far. And if you have some questions, maybe we'll jot them down and we'll do them all at the end. Because I think, I think I want to make sure we get it all so that we're not, we're not missing anything. I did notice that, you know, you brought it back to the, the change in area. And so all the areas that are showing are already zoned for multifamily. This is not a zoning question. We're just saying, do we want to put the MFTE on that as well to encourage more development there? So that's the question, as I see it. And we have a few options. We approve outright, we decline outright, or there's something in between. And so I guess, just think about that as we go through where, where you are on that and what you guys are thinking. And Ms. Newton, I guess I'll turn the time back to you and we'll see if we can get through this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so then below the chart on the recommendations and considerations for each of the areas, you've seen this before on the chart, so I'll move on. The recommendation from staff, there was a question on why expand along Gravel Lake Drive. So we do now have two projects that are pending, the MFTE. And it is the highest RTA density potential for the area. And also, as mentioned earlier, it's a regional center priority.
I'm sorry, Ms. Newton, we, can you clarify? Mr. Estrada, what was your question?
The two projects that are pending, which ones are they?
They're, they're on the list.
Mr. Estrada, Commissioner Estrada, the, the two projects that I'm referring to are two projects that we have been talking to developers with on, one of which has provided testimony before the commission. It's called the Lake House Apartments over behind the Clover Park Shops. There's another developer and owner of a construction company and Lakewood resident that has three parcels in, on, behind the Lake House project. And they are proposing a multifamily project in that area as well. So these are new projects.
Oh, new projects, not pending, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And one more time, where are they? I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I, I missed that, where are they?
Are they in the notes? I don't, I don't believe they were.
They are not in the notes, I just added that as a comment. And this, the comment is related to why expand along Gravel Lake Drive. And that was due to a developer input, property owner input, that they would like to do projects in that area.
One or two?
Two, two projects.
And they're both down by the Clover Park Shops?
That's correct.
And that would meant, mean displacing the current commercial properties?
So there, the properties that are being proposed, one is already vacant. The other one has a structure on it that is not being currently used. So there's really no displacement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then also just a clarification, why is the regional center important? So of course, we're looking at economic growth, efficient land use, enhanced transportation, community development, environmental benefits, and public investment. So these centers often receive prioritized funding for infrastructure and services, maximizing the benefit of the public investment. On page eleven, these are answers to some of the questions that were proposed prior. As I mentioned earlier, how much vacant and underutilized property is currently in the CBD RTA? So approximately sixty-nine acres of which just under seven acres are vacant. What will be the cost of the sewer extension in Telecom? It is estimated at six point oh eight five million, and it is currently in the six-year transportation improvement proposal plan. Why was the CBD RTA Gravel Lake Drive extension not included in the original residential target area designation? The planning for the CBD determined that the likelihood of residential development in the area were in those proposed areas that became the RTA and is based, anticipated based on the development in the area and developer and property owner input. How much has been built without MFTE? So we've had a hundred and fifty-one units built of multifamily since two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen total units with final occupancy, of which five hundred and sixty-seven units have received the MFTE. Fifty-one MFTE units are currently under construction. And as mentioned also earlier, there is an additional application for forty-eight units in the downtown Central Business District RTA. And finally, could Lakewood increase affordability requirements to thirty percent? I think I covered that, but yes, it's not feasible to require this due to the market. It's very difficult for developers to get to the twenty percent. So we want to make it so that they can at least include some affordability in these projects. Okay, it also came up at one point, there were some opposition to giving incentives to developers. So wondering why, why would we want to do that? First of all, the developers represent property owners in Lakewood who are members of our community, and often they are one in the same. Many of the Central Business District property owners and developers also are Lakewood residents. And developers and property owners are those that contribute to the growth of the economy and provided much-needed housing. So those are the main incentives, why the incentives are being offered. And then multifamily development impacts. Okay, so the following is an expansion of positive and negative effects of multifamily development because there is so much discussion in the community about multifamily. Again, MFTE does not change what's allowed in zoning or design or so forth. Positive for this type of development are diverse and inclusive communities, walkability, sustainable development, and more energy efficient and water efficiencies. Higher density in urban areas reduces environmental impacts and enhances green spaces and amenities. Also, a proximity to public transit, bike lanes and amenities can reduce the dependency on cars leading to lower overall carbon emissions. Some of the negatives, which we strive to mitigate as much as possible, large-scale construction projects, as any other project, generates waste. Construction of new buildings requires extraction of natural resources and the construction process itself can be energy-intensive. Large buildings can contribute to increased local temperatures. This is mitigated through the Lakewood Municipal Code to reduce those limits. And the construction phase itself can cause air pollution, just with anything else. Again, multifamily is already allowed in the code. So the environmental impact of new multifamily development depends largely on how it's planned, construction and operated. And so with proper attention to the sustainable design practices which are being adhered to now with the new building code and energy code, we are seeing, we should see more efficient buildings, which would, you know, as you know, the existing conditions such as the older inefficient buildings, parking lots, and unpaved areas do not provide environmental protections. Okay, so.
I had one question.
Yes.
You make a comment about environmental protection in that, but one of the things that I noticed with this multifamily development that we are encouraging is that all the trees have silver tags on them. What does that mean? What does that mean?
Want to talk to, do you know what that is?
I mean, my understanding would be normally those tags are put on, on trees when they're going to be torn down. And there's about 60 of them and many of them are mature firs that contribute to cooling. And, uh, they are on the edge and they were probably planted when the villa was there. Um, when it was, you know, the visitation villa would be my guess because they look about that age. They're, they're quite mature. So that, my question is, are they going to stay or are they going to go? Those should stay if you really want to reduce the environmental impact. They will help with water runoff. They will help with cooling. It will help provide a more desirable place to live and so on. But they've all got silver tags on them.
Commissioner Wallace, are you referring to the alliance project or which project are you referring to?
The back part, that's the, uh, prairie pavement in the town center. So it would be the alliance project, I believe.
Okay. We can certainly check on that. I do not know the answer to that.
Cause that would kind of go against the goal that you're talking about. Thank you.
That, that, that's not in the R T A boundary change though.
That's correct. It is, it's already.
It's just a general question.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. And then on to the code amendments, there are two. Uh, so the first one is 12 year extension added to the central business district. We are recommending that the code read as follows, extension for projects receiving an initial eight year or 12 year exemption. Any project in the central business district outside of the tax increment area. Lakewood Station District and Spring Brook Residential Target Areas receiving an eight or 12 year extension may apply for a subsequent 12 year extension exchange for continued or increased income restrictions on affordable units. If you, you'll remember when we first reviewed, um, this with you, uh, we had not yet um, established the tax increment finance area. That has since been established. And what the tax increment finance area does is allow for, um, the city to realize additional property taxes that occur due to, um, private sector development. And so we want to minimize the extension within the TIF area where we're encouraging that development. But we would like to see the extension added for areas within the R T A in the central business district outside the TIF. And then the second code amendment, uh, this is a staff recommendation. This is just clarifying the application procedure because there was some confusion by developers on when to apply. Um, so we're simply adding, um, some clarification in, in that. So the application would read file with the Department of Planning and Public Works. The required application along with the required fees as set in the Lakewood master fee schedule adopted annually by resolution. And we're adding the application shall be filed after land use permitting is complete or prior to building permit issuance, if no land use action is required. Conditional agreements shall be fully executed prior to issuance of building final certificate of occupancy. And then it goes on to say, if the application shall, shall result in a denial by the city, the city will retain that portion of the fee attributable to its own administrative costs and refund the balance to the applicant. So that I will entertain, or we will entertain any additional questions you might have.
Uh, I, I know Ms. Talbo had one question. I want to make sure she gets on first.
Yeah, thank you. Um, to your, there's a bullet point, I think it's on the top of page 15. About, you know, one of the positive impacts of, of and we development be in proximity to transit. And bike lanes. Have any of the F T Es or excuse me, the M F T E properties developed in the past, do they, have we collected? Either contributions from them or, um, front, beyond frontage improvements where they have either either contributed to the building of a bike lane or built the bike lane? Or do we just strictly, have we just strictly collected frontage improvements where they just build the planter strip and the sidewalk?
That again, that would be, um, required by code. It doesn't really have, I don't know the answer to that question of which projects may have contributed to a bike lane or, or so forth, but, um, the code, whatever the code would require, um, is what they would build to.
Which I'm, I think I'm kind of getting at is I, I don't think we require developments to I think we only require, we only require developments to contribute to the frontage improvements, correct? But we don't get multimodal interest. We don't get bike lanes out of them.
It really comes down to what the street design is when they look at it. So if they're required for the frontage improvement and they have the lane widening that's supposed to accommodate both like an 11 foot lane and then the bike and then a planter strip. Yeah, we would adhere to what the road standard calls out for. So the engineering standards manual. The question probably comes down to more and I can't answer it. So I'm, I'm letting you know right now where they built and what that design, that cross section was for the roadway for transportation. But like any project, so the expectation would be that any project we come in with would go ahead and do the road frontage and the cross section that is actually laid out inside of the engineering standards manual. Cause as every, as we look at it, as people continue to build, then the next person who comes in, they have to hit the standard. And eventually you have a bike lane or sidewalk for pedestrian access all the way down. But that's really all we look at. We're not asking for above and beyond for contributions.
Right, right. Okay. Um, and then the whole, the, the relationship with transit and these M F T E developments. Um, you know, with the goal and the intent being that we are trying to promote and encourage use, usage of transit or connectivity to transit, um, for improved livability and, and mobility and access, but um, have, this is kind of getting into the weeds, but you know, you can get data points from Pierce Transit or Sound Transit as to, um, how frequently the bus stops, how, how frequently bus stops are used and what the ridership is. Has there been any look at or analysis to validate the, the notion that yes, as a result of, um, as a result of these new developments, that there is an increase or a, or a effect uh, of, of ridership, of nearby ridership?
So I'll, I'll look to Ms. Spears to correct me if I'm wrong and I very well could be. But, uh, the latest that we've done is the change in that oriented development was relation to legislature that came through that we needed to push through the comprehensive plan. I do not believe we've had enough development yet as a result of any of the efficiencies or allowances that were put into the code to really be able to speak to that accurately.
There is one of the reasons I do, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Spear, go ahead. Um, I, I guess one of my observations is, is in the pink, um, proposed expansion area of the R T A, that area is not very well sou, served by transit now. There's only one route, route that, um, that goes along gravelly lake. And the rest of Pierce Transit routes converge around 100th Street and then turn into the transit center. So if we're trying to say, if we're trying to make the argument, well, you know, this is really good because um, we're making it better for transit and we're making, um, access to transit better for multifamily. I, I don't, I'm not sure that I would buy that. Um, just because I, I don't think you could, you could say that unless you have some data points to validate that Route 214 is pretty well used.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. If you need to just, so then.
I would just add that as of now, the city has not done any municipality specific type of data research that you're asking for. But we can reach out to both agencies, Pearson, Sound Transit to see if they have any, um, just kind of a before and after. See if they've got that kind of stuff.
And, and I think the one thing that, that I kind of look at when, yes, there's the access to Pierce Transit, but also the multimodal availability of transportation. So when we speak to it, it isn't only, it would be the bike lanes like you speak to. It would be the availability of pedestrian access routes that they can go down the sidewalk as well as Pierce. So when we speak to access to transit, I think in general, we're, we're talking holistically at all the multimodal.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? I, I had a couple, uh, comments, but I didn't, I, you know, I thought that we could open up for a little discussion, uh, and, and ask questions along the way. Any other questions though, on the presentation? If not, I, you know, the, um, is the way I understand it, or how I understand it so far, maybe you guys can clarify for me, Ms. Newton. We have two code amendments recommended, the 12 year extension added for C B D and application procedure edit. And then we have down here, the, uh, revisions to the R T A boundary as well. And each of the different areas, I see five, is that five altogether?
That's correct. I have the four areas for consideration and then the one map here that shows our staff recommendation, which is noted on that slide you're showing now.
All right. I'm sorry. I, I only see four in the packet. So I wasn't.
Oh, yes. Four, the four, um, that are consideration. And then the one map here shows the staff recommendation on the C B D, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got you. So the, the four over here are recommended. And then that's a staff added recommendation for gravelly lake. Okay. Um, get one clarification question on the application procedure. This may be, uh, very rudimentary, but I'm, I'm missing what, what's the benefit to the change here? What are we trying to accomplish with the edit on this?
This is for clarification for the developer because there was a lot of confusion. Um, sometimes when you are doing the processing of permitting, so you have the site development. We've always required that, uh, the developer apply after site development. And then we were telling them to also apply before building permits were issued, which was confusing because sometimes they happen close together. And so this way, um, it provides, um, more time for them to apply and more clarification on the process.
Um, is this process right here, which I'm, I, I, the easier we can make this for people, the better. If we want anything to work, we got to make it easy. Um, but my, my question is, is this similar to how Tacoma or the other cities who have used M F T effectively have done it? Or is this just unique to us?
I think this is a specific wording that we've added or proposing to add to the code. And it depends on the jurisdiction. Um, some make it more restrictive and some just go by what the state code is. So it varies.
That's fine. We, and I, we don't need to get in the weeds, but I guess if, if we made the change and it wasn't working, it would be good to look at the ones that are working well and see if there's language we need to adopt. Mr. Mack?
Just, just really quick, the reason that we're looking at making the change is if it has a land use action after land use action, we know the total number of units that they'll actually be able to move forward with, which is why we're waiting till after land use. If they don't require land use, then it's based strictly on the underlying zoning and the density. They would require that prior to, you know, pushing in for the building permit. So that's front loading before we start any of the building permits, knowing that this is going to be an M F T E project that we're looking at. It's just a matter of knowing the lots is the only reason we really gave it and opened the window. Um, the window sometimes between site development permit, because we also try to run our permits, um, in parallel. So you can come in for your site development permit. At the same time, you're having your building permit. The issue was site development permits ready to issue. The building permit was just waiting on the site development. Now they're all sitting while they're waiting for the M F T E. So we're moving a block in the system.
Got it. Thank you. Um, uh, you know, on the personal level, my take is, or my, my thought is I don't have any trouble with the application procedure, especially if it does, um, streamline things. Um, and gives the developer some clarity on timing, because that if, if timing or costs ever get affected, that's developers get anxious and pull back. So that would be one I would support. Um, the 12 year extension. You could, uh, I mean, you guys know I want to see housing. I don't know about, I have a little bit of hesitation on this because you go in for a 12 year and you go in for another 12 year. Um, I, that's 24 years of ta, tax exemption. And with a heavy focus on, um, affordable affordability for that, because that's the one that has 20%. And I just in back of my mind, it doesn't really, um, it, it, it feels like it's not as beneficial to the city or the community. Although I do realize we're trying to focus on the affordable housing component. If we get them built, I think we've got a better chance of keeping them than if they've already built it to give them another carrot. Now, that's just my, that's my gut take on it. I haven't spent a lot of time looking at that, but there's something about that, um, I struggled with. I, I was curious before I share, I was curious if anyone had any conflicts or concerns with any of these areas. Um, right now, I know we heard some, uh, feedback and so maybe by process of elimination, I was just going to hear ones we maybe didn't have problems with, we could focus on. You know, movement there, or if all of them were good, or if none of them were good. But what's everyone's take? How does everyone feel about central business district, Oakbrook, Telecom, Springbrook and the C B D?
I'll start then on this end. We haven't had any feedback.
I'm sorry, Ms. Spear.
I'm sorry. Just to clarify for the, for the public record, this is not taking action at all. This is discussion among the planning commissioners. No public hearing has been had yet. That'll happen on the 19th.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. So in discussing these four, I've had no adverse feedback except for the C B D. Um, and we've heard that previously also. Um, and, uh, we indicated there's a, there's a potential commercial displacement there. Um, um, I like the idea of, of, uh, increased housing. But, uh, we also have to listen to our citizens and I'm sure we're going to hear more. Yeah. As this comes out. Um, and regarding the other, I'm sorry, oh, sorry. You just, just, just.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Wallace?
I don't have anything to add.
I think the only thing I'd say is I think it is very important to be responsive to citizens. Um, I also think the conversation with citizens needs to be had really well. And one of the ways we have that well is by saying, we want to put density where it's zoned for it. So it doesn't end up in your backyard. Um, the downtown is a place for density in any jurisdiction, not just ours. And so how we do density in the downtown is a really great conversation. Whether or not we do density in the downtown, to me is a, a less interesting one.
And, and I, I appreciate that. This isn't, we're not talking about changing any zoning though. This isn't changing any of the housing zoning as it stands.
True.
So we're, we're just looking at the R T A changes. So.
To be clear, I was responding to Mr. Estrada who was saying, I've heard feedback that the downtown is the one place that folks were not as happy about having density. That's what I was.
Thank you. Got you. All right. So.
Just, uh, and add to, to that. Um, I guess I would like to see us trying to incentivize the 69 acres that we were talking about that are either underutilized or vacant before we start adding more someplace else. That was, I think Ms. Talbo brought that up initially a few months back.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, I agree entirely with what you just said. I think, I think you're hitting on the point for me that that's why it matters, that's why it matters, the strategy and how approached. And I, I, I understand that, yeah, I, I appreciate and I understand that it, it's a longer, it's a bigger apple to bite and it's a longer game. But I do think that, um, I guess on one hand, I guess I can see, okay, expanding the R T A is maybe a short game strategy. But I also see it as reactionary because there's interest expressed today in that area. But I think the, the correct, the more, the correct strategy is to deal with the elephant in the room, which is, which is the issue of how do you, how do you constant, how do you focus a vision in, in a part of the C B D? And I just don't want to see that, um, concept, that notion, uh, lost or, or. Lost or or act or, you know, I don't want to see us, I don't want to see the city be complacent about. Because it's a bigger problem to solve. I think if we could, if we could. In a way, kind of get off the M F T E, we could, you know, that that's where I think. The community. Involvement in the, I think that's that's where the bigger heavier lift is, but. Should be lifted.
Okay, and can you just clarify, what do you mean by getting off the M F T? How does that engage the community more?
I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, I think what I'm what I'm thinking is. Spent a lot of time hearing and discussing about. Whether or not to expand the R T A. To accommodate for M F T E. And if we're being asked simply to to just. Contemplate that so that. It just, you know, so that it makes it easier to just go forward to accept a property, then, okay. That's a, that's an action that this body can take and the council can take, but I think the bigger. The the bigger issue, the bigger problem to solve is is. Incentive incentivizing or focusing a physical vision for for a portion of the C B D, whichever portion that is. And that's why I, that's why I think. Some point you really should look at. Some sort of sub area for whether it's the town center or whether it's the Q F C area or whether it's the the the. Somewhere else in the C B D. So that's that's.
So and I I appreciate, I'm sorry to poke, I'm just trying to make sure I'm tracking it. I and so what I'm hearing most so far, Mr. Hur. Is so far, there's no objections to the other areas, but there is one with the C B D because we've heard some. Input from others about that. That's a little objectional and we're not convinced yet on that one. Is that fair? And then Mr. Hur, I, you want to want you to weigh in too.
No, absolutely. I think there's, we're talking about two things here. One are the additional, you know, the other sub areas. The focus is obviously the Gravely Lake extension. I think a couple of things that we haven't said out loud and that is involved in this broader community discussion. Is one, the area that's proposed for the extension is already part of the central business district as it sits currently. It's just that the R T A boundary does not line up with with the central business district boundary. I think that's an important distinction to make. Also, with regard to the commercial displacement discussion, if you will. Business owners, whether they are in our municipality or anywhere else. There are circumstances that they exist in, right? So part of doing business is negotiating leases, lease periods, terms. These things all still exist and are not affected by. This proposed expansion. So. You know, conceptually, if we say, if we recommend, yes, we want to do this, we say city council. Yes, we recommend and the council approves it and that expansion happens. That doesn't mean that tomorrow. All those leases are null and void and those businesses will be moved out of those properties. That's not a reality. That's going to happen. Now, if they they could potentially get to the end of their leasing period and that property owner may decide. Okay, now here's this tool, this incentive that's been offered to me. I'm going to take advantage of that. And as that property owner is also a business owner and we have to keep that in mind, right? I I've I've heard. People in this chamber and and throughout the community at the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce and other places. Where this discussion is happening. And so I want them to hear this discussion and understand those conversations are not happening in a vacuum, but. This is one part of a broader problem set. And if our focus is, and it is to increase. Our residential capability to bring that to bear, this. The M F T E is a tool for that, but this expansion. Brings the residential target area into line with the current central business district. It that that's not a big jump. I think what's happening is there's a lot of fear that's been sparked. And it's. I don't want to say unwarranted, but I I don't know that that fear is really an immediate. Concern. Does that, if that makes sense? I think my personal opinion right now is that. This expansion makes sense. Because it falls in line with other guidance. That's already in place from the city and has already been approved. And it makes, it 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 cleans up some of those boundary lines like Mr. Remac was talking about. And it just falls in line with the natural progression that we've we've already completed.
Thank you for sharing that and I I save my comments for last because I didn't want to poison the well. I I tend to agree with Commissioner Herr. I do like that expansion area just for the purpose of aligning with what the downtown commercial core is. My reservations are. Making sure we do hear the residents because there's something we're missing because I think that there is some a little bit of. Misnomers or misconceptions about what this means. And putting an M F T there doesn't mean all of a sudden that a giant building jumps up. It's already zoned for that. It's a matter of do we want to incentivize it further? And I do want to see more development in the city. We do not have a lot of people breaking down doors, so I'm, I want to encourage it. All that being said, if. If we were. If we're having reservations about it, is there a more metered approach where we're not, if. There's something where we say, okay, maybe we need to do this portion of it up to here to start. And and perhaps it's something where you expand and then do more later. I know we need to open it up maybe for more. Public comment. Is there another here or is there another public comment period? Or did we already go through all of those?
In terms of this issue, you have a public hearing next meeting on the nineteenth. And then you have the option to extend that if you want to take it to a future meeting as well. So it's really up to you going forward.
I I I my my recommendation or my proposal would be. I I don't have any issue with any of these. And the only one I had trepidation on was C B D based on public comment. And so I would say. Recommend these four. And then subject to further review of the C B D and I. My other recommendation would be no on one, yes on two. And so I don't know the best way of going about, you know, a vote and I'd love to hear comment on what I said. I I did have a point on transit. Having gone and talked to other cities about how they approach it. The one thing with transit is they they don't put buses where there's not demand. So typically the buildings go in first, then the then they put in the buses. And so when we're talking about multimodal, I agree with that. Transit actually is not the thing that starts it. It's the thing that closes it. And so I think that's a secondary thing and would actually come later. And most of the time, the counties and and those authorities are very interested in seeing that happen. So. I at least from the areas I I've seen. And the other one is. There is interest in the area of C B D now. And and when you said that, it really struck me that. We we have an opportunity to potentially incentivize development in an area that. Is already an area we want to see development in. And so I. I have some concerns about not, you know, holding it back. That being said, I I it's not a fight for today and I don't mean to fight. I just, I think it's something that I. If we have enough consternation on it, I would say. Let's talk about it and then push that one down the road one more time so we could hear public comment.
So, yes, that's, I was going to recommend that we will not take any kind of actions this evening, but there's way to the public coming.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, there needs to be the public hearing on all of the options before the commission were to take any actions.
Well, then let's do that.
Thank you. And if I could also respond a little bit to.
Miss Spear, yeah.
She's raised a couple of times this evening about the idea of sub sub areas, if you will, and design standards, et cetera, for them. Just remember that in the downtown, there already are three districts within the sub area. Including the Colonial District, which is up where Motor Avenue and the Q F C building is, and that does have its own set of design standards specific to it. All of that to say, there is the opportunity on a periodic basis to go into all of the sub area plans as well as the comp plan overall citywide. To add, subtract, amend. So you are on track if you didn't want to do it faster than this. To be looking at the downtown sub area plan here within the next eighteen to twenty four months again anyway. And so that may be an opportunity to see, are the district design standards for colonial area? A good idea to spread elsewhere or do we want to do that same idea in other parts of the downtown? And same would apply in the Lakewood Station District or the Tillicum Woodbrook area.
Thank you. I I have I. Have a economic development from. A consultant who works for the cities and counties and it's related to M F T E. I was going to send it to you, Miss Spear. Would you mind sending it out to everyone? And and feel free to include Ms. Newton and Mr. Mack on that. Is there anything else, Ms. Newton, for us today?
I don't believe so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. That wraps up all of our unfinished business. We have no new business at this time. Next steps, any reports from the city council? Our liaison, Mr. Bokey's here.
Thank you very much, Chair Combs, Paul Bokey, your council liaison. Glad to be here tonight. Thank you for all your work and you're taking on some. Some very difficult subjects and it takes a lot of time. Last year was. An exciting year with the comp plan and you got that job well done. Of course, you know, the issue with being on city councils and being on planning commissions, you never know that your job is well done until years later when things work out. People's satisfaction, which may never happen. And of course, sometimes you're your own worst critic and. In some cases I am on on things that we do as a council and you always wonder, well, did it, did it really turn out the right way and the. I I think you guys are putting in the work and 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 being very thoughtful about it. And so at the end, you do make the right decision, right? As it goes forward. We just sent you two more comp plan amendments last night. One is the text amendment, map and text amendment on the rezone in in the C B D of the open or the. Property that we just purchased by the, it's a portion of the Q F C property. And you'll be asked to rezone that from. To open space and recreation. Because that'll be the place for planned city park and it is adjacent to the Colonial Plaza there. We've also, we added also something else and I won't go into a ton of detail. Because I want to stay within the rules, but we are asking you to revisit the A D U regulations. Specifically about the minimum and maximum sizes. Of course, this is all, you know, every year we wait, we're in the middle of a. Of another legislative session, so there's rumors going around about different things that could possibly happen. That, of course, some of those may end up on your plate. So but we, so we we did add that last night. So one's just the map changed to open space and recreation. And the other's looking at the A D U regulations. Beyond that, there's a lot of different activities going on in the city. It's Black History Month. And there's. A number of items going on, so. I'll leave it at that. I know it's late.
Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Go ahead, Mr. Estrada.
Bokey, a couple of questions. So the Q F C building is going to be occupied by Sunset Bible. Are they purchasing or are they leasing?
I don't know. I I don't know any of that. If.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've I've heard, I've heard they would like to be in there. That's all I know. It's the same information that you may have better information than I do.
They've already approached, they feel like power for for power.
Oh, okay.
So but I didn't know whether it's going to be leased or whether it's going to be. Or or they purchased the property.
My impression that the building has been very. It's it's been neglected for a long time, I think, is to put it mildly. I'll just leave it at that. Nothing's been done with that building since the Q F C closed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you.
To have here. Well, with that, we have next meeting February nineteenth. No changes there?
No, no changes. February nineteenth is the date and that again will be the public hearing on what you've been discussing this evening. There will also be the presentation on the urban forestry assessment report that was just provided to me a couple of days ago and also. Some additional. Expansion beyond just looking at urban forestry in a coordinated way. If you recall, there's this energy and climate change work plan that was adopted in twenty twenty two by the city. It would be time logically to be re-upping that, updating it somehow because three years have gone by. But because of a number of other things that have been. Added to the conversation regarding trees, climate change, energy efficiency, greenhouse gas emissions, we're we're. Percolating another idea that the city council actually is going to talk about this next Monday night. And so that'll be in front of you as well, assuming the council is comfortable with it moving forward. And then we will begin already a review of the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan amendment cycle items the following meeting after that.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, we'll.